I'd like to ask the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning. I move that we adopt the agenda dated September 25, 2012.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my second motion is that we delay Items 2, 3, 4, and 5, and we proceed to Item 6, which is roll call.
Hearing objections, so ordered. The Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthertz. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyron. Speaker Wampert. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, I would like to report there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispicio, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated August 20, 2012, through August 28, 2012, subject to corrections.
On that motion, objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that these communications and petitions be appended to today's session in Journal.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imagallay in Guam, and I move for the same.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that these reports from the standing committees be appended to today's session in Journal.
Objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of select committees, and if they are any, I move that they also be appended to today's session in Journal.
Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On Item 12, introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move, ma'am, that Bill Number 508-31COR to Bill Number 516-31COR be given its first reading.
No, that's Bill Number 6. Hearing objections, so ordered.
As well as Resolution Number 491-31 to Resolution 514-31COR also be given its first reading.
Senator, can I ask if that 514 is the resolution?
It was Resolution 514-31.
It's not after, I think, Senator Munia Barnes had just introduced. So it's 515?
Okay. So Resolution Number 491-31 to Resolution 515-31 be given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And Certificate Numbers 159-31 to 16531 be also given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my next motion is to delay Items 13, sub-Items 1 through 8 on this agenda. These deals with the overrides.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my other motion is that any resolution in congratulatory or commendatory nature that's introduced for the duration of this session be adopted, and that all members be cosponsors, and that the legal counsel and the clerk work with the sponsors of these resolutions or certificates in the preparation of these documents that be so adopted.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, is to place Resolution 486-31. It's introduced by Senator Barnes, Munia Barnes, and Vice Speaker Cruz, and it's relative to voicing Ilacetruan Guam's continued support for the full implementation of Public Law 110-229, and requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security, the Honorable Janet Napolitano, provide for the issuance of a China visa waiver program through a parole authority, and the issuance of a broader final rule for the Marianas visa waiver program. This has had a public hearing conducted by Senator Barnes, and I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my next motion is relative to Bill 516-31, and we are in receipt of a letter from Senator Panglinen, and Speaker Panglinen writes to you requesting for emergency declaration or waiver of a public hearing requirement, rather, and he writes, "The United States Department of Education has granted the governor's request to extend the deadline from September 30, 2012, to September 30, 2013, the date by which Guam must obligate funds under the adequate education trust account," and the good senator here appeals to you, Madam Speaker, citing that these were items of the budget bill and subject of a prior public hearing, and so at this time I request for your disposition on Senator Panglinen's request.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. After speaking with the senator and carefully evaluating the request, I certify then that Bill Number 516-31 meets one of the requirements set forth in Section 2103, subsection A of Title 2, Guam Code Annotated, and the requirement for a public hearing is hereby waived.
Thank you very much. Having received that declaration, I move then to place Bill 516-31 on the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think we have some, a couple of minutes before the official delegation arrives and honors us with their presence, so at this time I'm going to go ahead and move that we go to the second reading file, and that we entertain discussion on Senator Barnes's resolution, and as soon as we see the delegation from Pankasin, and no matter where we are at in that discussion, I respectfully ask that we stop, suspend those discussions, allow me to provide a motion to resolve and decree the whole for entertaining our honored guests. So I move that we go to the second reading file.
So on that motion, without any objections, so ordered. We are in the second reading file, and I recognize Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes on Resolution 486.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move that Resolution 486-31COR be moved to the third reading, and I'd like to briefly speak on it.
Yes, you may continue.
Madam Speaker, this Resolution 486-S31 is relative to voicing Ilacetruan Guam's contin- resolution. To the support for the full implementation of Public Law 112-229, and requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security, the Honorable Janet Napolitano, provide for the issuance of a China visa waiver program through her parole authority, and the issuance of a broader and final rule for the Marianas visa waiver program. I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that the U.S. Congress passed Public Law 110-229, the Marianas visa waiver program, to sustain the growth of the region's tourism economy. Guam's tourism industry supports over 18,000 jobs, Madam Speaker, and over 30 percent of Guam's economic base and Japanese visitors account for approximately 70 percent of the visitor travel to Guam. I want to share that industry experts have estimated that Japanese visitor arrivals to Guam may decrease by 15 to 30 percent in the short time, and policy leaders in Guam in Washington must take strong proactive steps to avert an economic downturn. I also want to say that in December of 2011, Madam Speaker, the Department of Homeland Security granted a visa parole authority for Russian visitors to come to Guam, and stakeholders spanning both our local community and the federal government continue to work closely with agencies within the Obama administration to realize a visa waiver program that will also allow for regularly scheduled airlifts from the People's Republic of China to Guam. And absent a full China visa waiver for Guam, the use of parole authority with a reduced notification period linked with the effective pre-screening of the PRC visitors may be a viable option, and under a model currently used by the Australian government, the People's Republic of China visitors are required to undergo pre-clearing process prior to departure, potentially settling the national security issues. Guam's inclusion in a China visa waiver program will provide our island with the economic stability required for continued growth and expansion for our current tourist tourism market. I also want to note that our neighbors in the CNMI, Saipan, have already been granted parole authority, allowing the government of the Northern Marianas to presently receive visitors from China, and this parole authority was granted to provide the commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands with a measure of economic stability in their difficult times. Madam Speaker, visitors from China and other areas that may be of concern to the Department of Homeland Security already have access to the island by way of regular visa and temporary foreign worker programs, and U.S. employers are able to hire foreign workers on a temporary or permanent basis to fill jobs in the United States or its jurisdiction, and will be the case in support of the impending military buildup on Guam. The Secretary of Homeland Security has granted the CNMI a China-Russia visa waiver program by parole authority, and in doing so has demonstrated that security concerns regarding the presence of Chinese or Russian nationals on U.S. soil has already been adequately resolved, and the Congressional Intent of Public Law 110-229 must be fully recognized as the existing mandate on the island should therefore be fully executed. I want to say, Madam Speaker, that during a meeting with Congressman Joe Wilson on August 8, potential options were discussed that would work to address any security issues the U.S. Department of Defense, the Department of Homeland Security, and the U.S. Department of State has had with this waiver program. Also discussed was a congressional resolutions to be introduced by Congressman Joe Wilson and our own Congresswoman Madeleine Bernalio, supporting Guam's, which would be supporting Guam's push for the inclusion of China in the Guam visa waiver program. Madam Speaker, the intent of this resolution is to petition the Honorable Janet Napolitano to immediately exercise her parole authority and permit Guam's inclusion in a China visa waiver program, thereby recognizing the Congressional Intent of Public Law 110-229. Madam Speaker, again, I just want to thank the hard efforts of our Congresswoman Madeleine Z. Bernalio, the Honorable Madeleine Z. Bernalio, and also our stakeholders here on Guam, the Guam Visitors Bureau and the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, for their continuing efforts in supporting this resolution so that the realization of our number-one economic market stability here on Guam is our tourist market, and to increase that would be a major revenue source into the island. So I humbly ask that my colleagues help me and support these efforts, and I'd like to thank my Vice Speaker, my good Vice Chair, for also supporting the efforts and being the number-two cosponsor. So Sidhu Smasi for giving me the opportunity to speak this morning.
On the motion? Do you speak on the motion? Are you going to speak, Senator Panglinen, on the motion? Oh, okay. I thought you were walking back.
Thank you, and Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to rise in support of this resolution. This is part of a long and continuing effort to try and get the federal government to respond to the needs of our economic opportunities that continue to be stifled by federal regulations that don't really make much sense. And I want to speak to Mr. Webb and Mr. McCain and Mr. Levin because I know I can change their minds. I know that when I talk, they listen. I know that when they think national security is at stake, but I tell them it's okay, they will change their mind. But really and seriously, Madam Speaker, I appeal to those gentlemen because at least we know that they listen to us. At least we know, according to inside sources that speak to Mr. Levin, that he listens to what I have to say, that he was responding to comments I made that forced him to consider his positions on certain issues like the military buildup. I know that when I told Mr. Levin, "It doesn't make sense in your plan for the military buildup, and what are your plans in bringing in the Marines? Are they going to be permanently stationed on Guam, or are they going to be rotationally stationed on Guam?" And when he said, "We don't know yet. We're asking the Pentagon to give us those plans," well, we said, "You know what?" And Senator Guthertz echoed this, "You know what? When they come in rotational, the current ruling by the federal government is we don't get their Section 30 money. So you need to address that issue." And what happens? The federal government, the Department of the Treasury and the Pentagon, Department of Defense, worked out an agreement. So now the Marines that are coming to Guam on a rotational basis, we're going to get Section 30. That's what it means when we rise up and ask the questions we need to ask on the policies of the federal government that don't make sense, whether it relates to the buildup or whether it relates to economic opportunities that are stifled for the people of Guam because of federal policies. So I'm asking Mr. Levin and Mr. McCain and Mr. Webb to pay attention and be, again, an advocate for the positions we are advocating with regards to the China visa waiver program. They understand, and at least they're listening, and we're hoping that, and the Obama administration continues to listen, and now we're appealing to Janet, through, get this done through an administrative ruling. And so we are requesting, of course, the Secretary of Homeland Security, if I believe I'm correct, to issue an administrative ruling that expands economic opportunity in the area of tourism for us. Madam Speaker, the United States itself, our entire country itself, is doing all that it can to ensure that we promote tourism as an export product of the United States because an export product means economic activity. It means we are building something rather than consuming something. So when we export, we build things to export, and tourism, despite for what we think it wor- how it works, it's an export. We export our location, we export our sunshine, we export our shopping opportunities, we export our culture, we export all of the things that make Guam a unique place to visit and a desirable place to visit for the world, Madam Speaker. And in this case, we're focusing on China as that part of the world, to export our hospitality and all the things that we offer people looking for a leisure experience in this industry called tourism. And it really does not make sense that we continue to say, "You can't bring these individuals in under an expanded authority," and it makes it easier for them to travel to Guam, that gives them, that gives Guam the same access, or gives these tourists the same access to Guam, as they have access to Japan, as they have access to Rome, as they have access to Australia. All of these other places that they have access to are our competitors and our allies. They are the people that we deal with and we depend on when we have cooperative agreements in responding to conflicts in the world. When a conflict breaks out, we call on Australia, and we trust them, that they, Madam Speaker, respond and support United States efforts in conflict hotspots across the world to assure peace and stability and democracy in those areas. And yet, they give the Chinese tourists access to their countries. Why can't we give that Chinese tourist the same access to us? That, Madam Speaker, is why I think it's so necessary to kind of frame this argument in a different perspective with regards to the federal regulation that inhibits and really restricts and constricts our ability to expand our economic base in the, one of our primary legs of our economic sustainability on Guam, which is tourism. It makes sense, they're doing it 124, 134 miles north of us, that this opportunity is given to our cousins and our brothers and our sisters in the CNMI. And, Madam Speaker, the CNMI sees that they're not lobbying in the back against us. As a matter of fact, they think that a coordinated effort in promoting the Marianas as a destination helps them as well as us with regards to our China and our Russia and our tourists. We're not competitors. We're collaborators in that effect, Madam Speaker, in that we can work together to increase traffic to our part of the world, and we will share that bigger pie among us ourselves. So giving this opportunity to Guam does not reduce the size of the pie of Chinese tourism for the CNMI, it increases it. So it's good for both the CNMI and Guam, and that's why we're cooperating and collaborating in our efforts to have the parole authority, and expansion of China visa waiver through parole authority, through the administrative process, is a good thing for our part of the region, Madam Speaker. And so I just want to commend the authors of this because this is not the first effort, Madam Speaker, as we all very well know. This is not, "Oh, let's do this." This is a sustained effort by this community and the leadership of this issue, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator B.J. Cruz over the years, and all of the other industry professionals, the Chamber of Commerce as well. We're all on the same page on this one, the Guam Visitors Bureau, the Hotel and Restaurant Association, the Taxi Owners Association, the Guam Retail Association. We're all on the same page in saying that this opportunity must be given to Guam in order to help us sustain our economic base and expanding. And so, Madam Speaker, and there are many, many others, Madam Speaker, that continue to support this, whose names may not appear here at this time. Yourself, Madam Speaker, have been a great advocate of this, and the advocacy through the APIO and your leadership with the APIO now, in terms of advocating for the expansion of this program, supporting Guam's effort on this thing. All of us are contributing to this, and we know that, and we certainly are, again, hoping that not only do we get the support and the effort that has been the history of this issue in terms of providing an opportunity for every single sector of our community to collaborate on this issue and support it, this is a great opportunity to do so, that we put aside for once any sort of differences on any other issues that we may disagree on, but I think we all agree that this is a good thing and it deserves our support. So whether or not we agree with the Chamber of Commerce on any other issue, or the Hotel Restaurant Association, or even the governor, whether or not he agrees that we should all be traveling and going together to promote Guam, you know, regardless of how we feel about each other on a personal basis, that it's a good thing, and that we put those things aside and work on this issue, and lend our voice to this issue, and make it clear that this is something that the community of Guam supports, the people of Guam want, the people of Guam deserve, and the people of Guam need in our efforts to ensure that we expand our economic opportunities, to ensure that we provide the necessary resources to continue to educate our children, fix our roads, expand our infrastructure, because all of the revenues that will be generated by this goes out to the community. It doesn't stay in Tumon. No matter, we may disagree that it should stay in Tumon and we should enhance that, that's something we disagree, but we don't disagree that we should go out and get that money, and then we'll figure out later how to cooperate in terms of providing then and dividing that resource to all sectors of our community so that it doesn't only go to Tumon, it goes to Talofolfo, and it doesn't only go down to Tamuning, that it goes to Malesu as well. Let's set aside of what we're going to do with the money. Let us come together and coal us on this issue and ensure that we open that door a little wider than what we have now, and ensure that we expand our export base as an economy to ensure that we provide the resources for our people. So, Madam Speaker, I want to, once again, commend Senator Munia Barnes and Senator B.J. Cruz for their sustained efforts over the years on this issue. Our Congresswoman, Madam Speaker, continues to be at the forefront of this issue in terms of using her ability in Washington to move this forward, Madam Speaker. My ability and your ability and Senator Guthertz's ability and Senator B.J. and Senator Roy Rispicio's ability to speak and ask the questions as a cohesive voice and influencing changes at the national stage, as we are given credit for, and I take that credit with all due humility. And let's hope, let's hope that they listen to us once again, each and every single member of this community, each and every single voice that lends itself to this effort, and that we provide, that we will, in effect, get the administrative ruling that we can avail ourselves off without having to go through congressional action, which is long and tedious, but the administrative ruling and power is there in order to open that door wider for us and help us sustain and expand our economic base, Madam Speaker. So I want to commend everyone that's working on this and continue to lend my efforts to their efforts as they lead us into this opportunity that can only be beneficial to the people of Guam and to the region of the Marianas, for that matter, Madam Speaker. So Sidhu Smasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Guthertz.
Madam Speaker, first I want to commend Senator Barnes and also Senator Cruz, even Senator Panglinen, and all of our colleagues who have been very supportive of the China visa waiver initiative. You know, this goes back many years. This is not a new subject for us here in the legislature. And as Chair of the Military Buildup and Homeland Security Committee, I would like to say that there really should be no overly exaggerated concerns regarding the homeland security aspect of this visa waiver. They're doing it effectively in the Northern Marianas. They've done it for years there, having visitors from the People's Republic of China, and we should be able to do the same here with the immense infrastructure we have for law enforcement and our military presence on Guam. We should be able to resolve and handle any potential threats to our island and to our country that may emanate from visitors coming from the People's Republic of China. The business community, of course, is looking forward to this area to be resolved quickly because of the potential boon it will have to Guam's economy, and all of us here join the business community in pushing hard for this initiative. Guam needs this. This will make a tremendous difference in the lives of our people, having a new area of concentrated, regular tourists coming to Guam. With such an immense population, you can imagine, if just 1 percent of the people in the People's Republic of China are able to travel, what that would mean if they come to Guam to visit us. So I stand in support of this resolution, and I'm very, very pleased that my colleague, Senator Barnes, has continued to focus on this with Senator Cruz as a major, major initiative. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, to close then or to put it down?
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank my colleagues who spoke and rose and spoke in support of this effort on Resolution 486. I would be remiss if I didn't add you as a third cosponsor, Madam Speaker, so on that motion. as a third cosponsor, Madam Speaker, so on that motion.
Without any objections, so ordered.
I also just want to say, Madam Speaker, and reiterate, that tourism is the largest single industry in Guam's economy, and it generates 60% of the island's revenues. I want to say that China represents the largest and fastest-growing potential for tourism in the world, with an estimate of 50 million citizens capable of traveling and 100 million more by the year 2020. I want to share with you that GVB's Chinese Visitor Exit Survey say right now, that was conducted throughout this past year, estimates approximately $1,200 per day spent per Chinese visitor, and I want to also note that Guam, right now, is at a disadvantaged position because of the current visa situation, which is very expensive and time-consuming for, time-consuming for the potential Chinese traveler. And I want to say that using the most conservative projections, including China and Russia into Guam, CNMI visa waiver program, Guam would result in approximately $144.5 million in additional revenues for the government of Guam by the year 2020. So, Madam Speaker, I want to say that as we continue to diversify our current markets and attract new markets for Guam, I humbly ask my colleagues to support this effort, and I want to thank all the stakeholders involved for continuing to put this effort to the forefront. Sina Maasi, Tatlu, for giving me the opportunity to close on this Resolution 486.
You're welcome. So on the motion to send Resolution 486 to the reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respecho on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we resolve in the committee of the whole for purposes of formally establishing a sister-city relationship between the province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and the island of Guam pursuant to Resolution Number 299-31, which was adopted on January 20, 2012, and I further move to have me chair the committee of the whole, given my oversight over foreign affairs, and to allow the delegation from Pangasinan headed by Governor Spino, and to further allow all members of the Federation of Pangasinancis on Guam headed by its President, Major Vic Rivo, as well as Congresswoman Madeleine Bernalio, be allowed to enter the session hall for these very formal proceedings.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that we recess and...
We'll take a brief recess to bring our guests in.